Yeah.
That's why I did it, but like.
She has a. It was she said.
So this one always gets.
Yeah.
Uh, should not.
Thanks.
Long.
Yeah, I need to.
We'll find out.
I had said I was.
We'll be nothing. I haven't talked to her. She has. So we'll find out.
And that's what I'll let them know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I mean, totally be, I mean, I.
Well, didn't really say the B, but it, you know, just not the B, better word.
I'll bring what we're left first, so.
Are gonna be late today.
Asked it over and called and said they were gonna be late. Not clerk, we'll call.
Mr. Please let me say here, Mr. Malloy.
Here.
This French cow.
Okay, we're gonna start if we could, um, let's get in some harvest stuff. We have a few people here from Bristol and I'll take up more of their time if they, if we can put, um, their issue up to the front and good. Now, I received the call from, uh, one of the other trustees and I'm sorry to both of you many times in the past. And, um, I know Marla will talk to you, Mr. Chicklow. Um, and in regards to the ambulance, you've been patiently waiting, um, we haven't paid from Tanya in regards to.
No, this is she has that and along with, um, the scope center request and, um, she will have the Mecca township. Those are the only three things currently on her desk for decisions on eligibility, but she is also working on the Vizzetta Road thing so that they're working on that agreement, uh, back and forth between her and Jason Toad.
Okay.
So those are the things that she's currently.
What, when, when did we send that down to her?
I, I'm not sure. I don't have my head spin on this.
It was what that we did the last.
The last seven.
Right, right. It's been working her way through this. I don't know if she's had contact with the chief or do it all since the beginning that she.
I've never, I've never.
I will, I will, um, send out a reminder to her on this that she has it sometimes, but she has a lot on her desk and she's working through. And she may, I, I would also look through my emails.
Yeah, if you could.
But she hasn't, she has not sent out a decision and, you know, well, that's kind of.
Well, Mike, I have two big concerns. The one is they have been patiently, basically waiting long, long time on, on multiple grants, which is no fault of theirs. Um, secondly, we're getting into a situation which I totally understand. They've got to request it at the price of an ambulance and now we're getting into twenty twenty-five models and prices are gonna go up and I, I fear that she'll come back with an answer and by the time we get the answer, if it's not soon enough, then you'll be in a situation, you know, with shortfall with the, the difference between the cost of a new ambulance and, and we've seen prices go up on everything, including the command vehicle and, uh, from talking to John and stuff, things are, you're dealing vehicles. Um, there's times of the essence to make sure that we hit the quote, make sure that's right. And I would um, say, you've been so patiently gracious with that. If there is a price difference when we get to that point, if they're because of the delay, if they're a little bit overage on that, I, I would be able to to, um, adjusting the figures accordingly to make sure you don't have a shortfall on that.
Certainly, obviously, yes. Um, and, and maybe if we can ask Tanya that she could put this.
Yes, sir.
Just because Bristol's been waiting, maybe at the front of the line of, of what she's working on. You know, I know that they've been patiently waiting, so.
And it has been brought up, you know, it's been sent to her, it's been adjusted, it's been ratified. She is well aware of, of that and there is the process, unfortunately. It's, you know, government wheels of feeling, you know. She's got on the regular practice with other things she does at the same time. She's been giving them to us about, well, we had a delay for a couple of weeks. When she was out, but it seems like we've been getting one or two a week. Last week we got three, this week we got one. And we're down to, as she said, the last two.
Last, well, three, including that.
Last three.
I, I guess they just keep in mind that we're, this process is there for a reason, that she was hired for a reason so that the county isn't, you know, uh, held responsible when it comes to an audit or anything like that, that spent something illegally. So we need to make sure that we're taking her advice. I have, I, I have a lot of confidence that she's gonna come back and approve this. Um, we just have to wait and see, so.
I think.
You know.
Turnover rock when it comes to, and it's like the third submission and, and I, I know you did your due diligence a little better. This time we'll make it so that we put everything in here and, and if she, if she doesn't, um, I would be.
Sorry, I'm late. Um, I just got an email from Doug Seaman. He was asking for some assistance potentially from our office on that as well. So I didn't. I had asked him to send me the application and all the materials, but I haven't gotten much yet. But I'm willing to look at them when I return from vacation.
Julie Green, our planning commissioner.
Sorry about that. Oh, hi, Joey. Julie Green. Yes, so, um, I'm meeting with Mecca this afternoon and, um, I also speak with Community Family Outreach Center, but was waiting for today to discuss that with you, both and Martha. So we were able to get, you know, four of them approved that were originally deemed ineligible, so I I'm hopeful. If, if that's what you would like, the planning.
Yeah, I, I just want, I'm gonna make commitment to these gentlemen. This has gotta be telling his top priority when we leave this meeting. By next week going up, see if we can push the best we can to have, have her to have a decision.
But I think.
Solid ways so we can.
With Julie's track record, let's, I, I would love Julie to work on it with you guys.
Yeah, rather than waste Tanya's.
Well, she's already got, she's already addressing it. It's already, it's on her desk right now. It's been re.
Yeah, she had it. I'm, I'm looking to find where they sent it, but I know we did send it over, um, that I did send it over, just sent it.
But she could still receive with.
Certainly, I can send you what, what she, what was already sent, so you can look at it. I'll be glad to do that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's.
Um.
What's helpful is to have the application and the legal opinion if there is one that says, you know, what the original findings were. And that's what I use to.
Right. I have, well, I have the application. I mean, I have all of that. I will send you everything I have as soon as I get out of here today.
Okay.
Um, just kind of listening. Sometimes with email threads with her, it gets very.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Um.
Not to skip ahead, but we also are gonna work on the MOUs for the other items too. I don't know if we're discussing that.
We can. I mean, I don't know if it'll be right this night. We were dealing with the kinsman's for the Bristol stuff, because they had to come, so.
Yeah, I initially had, Doug, Doug had come to our office on another matter and I had offered at that point and he had emailed and said that, you know, they were handling it. I said, okay, well, let us know. And then when I spoke with them last week, he said he was going to email me documents. And then today he followed up with another email saying that I have a chance to look at them. I don't know if he tried to relay them and they didn't go through or what, but I had said.
So he may, he may have been in contact with her. I know you guys have, but he may be in contact with her directly if he's got other things he's forwarding.
He, he just forwarded me anything. I, I haven't received anything, so I'm.
Right, but he said he had other stuff. These guys hadn't talked to Tanya yet. They're, uh.
Doug said, Doug asked if I was able to review, um, the ambulance, cybersecurity and something else. There was three things that he asked me if I had a chance to look at applications. So I haven't gotten any, but I'll ask for them.
Right. I haven't seen anything. I don't know what you're talking about with cybersecurity or anything. It just, the art, only thing I have is an email to request.
Okay.
So, and I'll, and I'll get you everything.
Wish we had more information for you today, but.
We'll really help. Because I don't have.
If Julie can't find the way to do it, it can't be done.
Hey, guys, we'll update as soon as we hear one thing. I'll actually, um, after we're done with the meeting, when, uh, Julie does have a chance to get what they're all call, uh, start by calling you, I'll give you a buzz and let you know what they're saying, then you can lay it.
Good.
It is worth noting, I am leaving tomorrow. I'll be back on the twenty eighth. In case you.
Where are you going?
Try to call me and, and I, you know, don't respond.
Where are you going?
I know.
Oh, yeah, Italy.
What? What are you laughing at?
He said, don't respond. He whispered it and it comes right out.
Yeah, well, that's okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. For the main, uh, dispense of the workshop. Minutes, reading the minutes for the bills, transfer money, sanitary engineer, three of them.
Uh. You wanna do that or you want me to do that?
Oh, you can do it.
All right.
They're pretty easy.
Okay. So the first three on these, the, the transfer of money, the second half bond payment, uh, are both the, the first two are just from different funds and that prosperity, no chaos is the third one. Uh, number four, to a pre additional appropriations, um, the five thousand dollars from auditor IT is to set up an Adobe fund as we're um, doing Adobe's appropriations for different, um, departments and offices. Corner Health is a fiscal year twenty-five free healthy communities grant. Um, the building inspection is, uh, additional architect fees. Domestic relations is law luncheons. Eastern Court is security cameras and the treasure is Adobe Pro licenses, which again, it's a trip for somebody. Um.
But.
Transfer of appropriations, um, additional honors, additional refunds. The Board of Elections and additional maintenance fees. Clerk of Courts is quarterly, quarterly fees for posted corner of additional operations supplies. Domestic relations, even a quarter is twenty twenty-five dues. On Eastern District Court is additional equipment maintenance, neocap is fixed. Um, a shower, this is not like a single shower, a large shower. Um, planning commission is that pay for the sanitary engineer for project and mileage for training. Um, and then to the sanitary engineer ones, um, elevator permit for the MW, MCW, WWTP, um, the Warren Township, uh, water district permits, electric for the Graceville Township Water District, O U P S bills and sewer repair materials. Number six is, are there better analysis? You're familiar with those. And again, continuing to try to whittle those down, but uh, we have to work out compliance with other departments and, and officers.
Thank you. And number seven, uh, closed long roadway Hubbard Bedford Road, October fifteenth to Friday, November eighth, for call replacement. Uh, special annual fleet permit for aggregate XPO logistics. Special hauling permit, steel coils, general transportation. Special hauling permit, overweight roads, J F Loma Inc. And reward, uh, lowest responsible bid estimated by SET for the railroad crossing removal, an amount of one hundred eleven thousand to be direct paid by grant, an amount of a hundred thousand, three seventy-five received from all rail development commission, balance of the highway engineers fund and enter a contract with SET for said project. Project includes elimination and restoration of three at grade railroad crossings located, located at Benedict Levesford Road and Anderson Bailey Road, Braceville Township and Deal South and Warren Township.
Challenge.
Two other bids. They had was Rudzik and Miller Yon, but they went with, uh, hundred and eleven.
Is, is anyone on the line from, uh?
Yeah, the middle bid, about twenty thousand more than, uh, yeah, first bid or the Rudzik.
So Rudzik was significantly cheaper. Is anybody on the line from the Highway Engineers Office?
And actually, it's, uh, eighteen thousand more than the engineer's estimate.
He, Steve says he's on the, I'm on Zoom. We can get Steve Gerberian.
I don't, I wouldn't tell them, because I, I have a name. But they can unmute themselves.
You can hear me?
Yeah, there you are.
There you go.
Okay, I didn't know if you could hear me on here or not.
It's really clear.
Oh, yes.
You're like God.
Yeah.
I whisper. Yeah, this is the one that I talked about maybe two weeks ago, that, that there was a previous issue with the low bidder on a project for the county engineer with our salt dome.
I don't know, I don't recall what you're talking about.
And, and there, is this the one where there were some potential OSHA violations and?
Sorry, my, my speaker turns off periodically. So alls I heard was, um, is this the one where there was?
Like potential OSHA violations with them and, and some of the.
Correct. Yes, this is, this is the one that we talked about. Yeah, with those, those issues. Um, the issue with our salt dome and, um, I forget that there was another one. I can't remember off the top of my head. Um, I do know that, that Gary Schaefer reached out to the, um, rail commission and, um, they were okay with our decision and, and, uh, you know, our recommendation, I guess it's your decision, but you know, our recommendation to go with the, um, SET as well, so.
Isn't there, is there anything in bidding about being more than twenty percent over the engineer's estimate? This is over there. Is there any?
Um, I think, I don't. I.
Three thousand always do it twenty percent, isn't it?
I don't know. I didn't do the math. I know last, when I came down, I know that I was told that it was within that twenty percent threshold.
Well, a hundred and eleven thousand minus ninety-one thousand is twenty thousand. If the engineer's estimate is ninety-three, that's eighteen thousand, six hundred. So twenty thousand would be over there.
Yeah, I'd have to check. I, I don't know that. I mean, I, I thought, I was told it was under some like.
How did you?
I just did it on the calculator. It's ninety-three, one ninety would be.
No, the bit, the bit, ninety-three thousand, seven ninety is engineer's estimate.
Twenty percent of that is eighteen, seven fifty-eight.
Right. But we're giving it to them for a hundred and eleven. You had eighteen. It'd be right on the bubble then.
Well, twenty percent.
That was close.
That's committed one twelve, five forty-eight.
This was in.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, barely, but.
Barely.
Right. Yeah, it would be one twelve, five, five forty-eight.
Yeah, in, in light of the issues that you mentioned, um, Steve, and, uh, I know there's even a potential investigation into fatality there. I, I've heard about that. I, I have no problem moving forward with this bit.
So do we put someone on like a ban list? Do we have like a blacklist when that happens? Or we just indiscriminately say, not this job, but maybe the next one? Or what's the policy on that?
Gary Newbrough Sanitary Engineer, Runthick has been one of my best contractors with the sewer projects. Never had any safety issues with my hours. I mean, there wasn't good contractors and bring us in under the, um, the tentative assessments in town. So that's just my two cents on that.
No, no.
We banned, we banned them either.
No, no.
They have an impact on sewer projects.
I can relay what the prosecutor's office has advised in the past is if you do have an issue with a contractor, you should document it so that the next time it goes out for bid and you, you have some documentation as to why you're not awarding it to them. So I would imagine that our county engineer's office has that documented in some way, shape. But he also stated, I hate to quote Bill, but he said it so many times, I feel like I can't, uh, that you cannot restrict bidding. It has to be open. Um, and then everything would have to be on a case by case basis. So. At least.
If I could interject, I do think that, um, Attorney Danzo was in, you know, in the loop on this as well and i- and again, it's, that's our recommendation. It's the commissioner's decision who to award to, so whatever the decision is, we're, we're okay with too.
But that's why we put in lowest and responsible into the language so that there is this sort of, um, administrative leeway when it comes.
Right. But apparently, one department says they're very responsible and another one says they're not. And usually, I mean, should this be run by the, the prosecutor's office? There's no, no prosecutor's opinion. I hate to sound like another commissioner, but there's nothing in here shows that was run by the prosecutor's office and they interjected on this officially. And he said that he thinks it was, but it's not on here. That he did.
Steve, do, do you have documentation on that?
Um, I don't have it right at my fingertips. I'm sure Gary said that the prosecutor's office was involved in, so I'm sure he could forward something. If it's immediate, I mean.
If you can get us that, it would be much appreciated. Anything you have.
See that, cause like I said, I don't want, if they're in good graces, the one, not the other, I, I think we're um, either they're good for the county or they're don't good for the county. Period. One, one or the other. I, I don't like that discretionary bubble there, I guess, of differing opinions if there's, I, I think that opens us up to.
I mean, at the end of the day, I, I go with recommend, typically go with the recommendation of the engineers, those that know um, what these companies are doing, or what their track record is like. So if the engineer is recommending this, um, I, I have no problem moving forward.
I, I would like to see some.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking through the, the email right now. It's, there's, one was like thirteen pages, so.
I'm Gary Newbrough Sanitary Engineer. There's, this company, they have, they may have different individuals going right, water sewer work, not the list of road work.
Right.
So they may be.
Sure.
You know. Cars, well, less qualified to do the, the road, the road work, but sewer work, like I've said, they, they've been an excellent contractor for us. They've probably done anything to the late century of our major projects, yes.
A lot.
So that's what I mean. I hate to, in one sense, we're saying they're bad, we're not going with them because the issues, um, I think it should be standardized somewhat, either they're good or they're bad.
Well, I think the issues, Steve, that you brought up with the salt dome and, and any other documentation that you have, um, that went into the thought process of this recommendation should be sent over to the commissioners if that's okay.
It's, it is a twenty thousand dollar decision here.
Sure.
Are they worth, is the other one worth an extra twenty thousand dollars to not have those issues? I'd like to see something.
Steve, you there? Well, Steve's gone, he muted himself.
He, he should be able to unmute.
You can unmute now.
Okay, I, I'm back. I couldn't unmute. I was trying, but it wouldn't let me, so now I can. Okay. Um, I forget the question. I was.
So, you know, this is a larger discrepancy here, as Mr. Malloy pointed out. Any and all documentation regarding how you're arriving at this decision. Now, you mentioned the salt dome and all that, but, but put that in writing for the commissioners to have it to make the best decision possible.
Okay. Not, not a problem. We'll, we'll send something over.
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome.
Appreciate it. I don't want to send a bad message, I guess, I do if they have been law, if they've been good.
I, I agree, I agree.
So we won't put you on the spot, but it's something I'll be doing later.
Okay.
I think I quoted you.
Okay, number twelve.
You can correct me if I was.
Authorized Planning Commission to submit an amendment request to Ohio Department of Development for Grant Number BF twenty-three ICS one BY twenty twenty-three CDBG Community Development Program. And authorized, sending Malloy, President of the Board, to sign any related required arguments. The original grant application and grant agreement were authorized on May ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, Julie Green, Chum County Planning. Uh, this is just a standard request for approval. Then we, uh, request the monies be moved around within the grant activities on the Ocean Portal. We just, we're under budget and some over and others, and we're gonna need every dollar, I think, for the Howland Scope Center bid, which is going out for bid here, I believe, um, October the twenty-eighth, we're gonna ask to have it in the newspaper to re-bid that project. It was bid out last month and we received no bids at all. It's disappointing, so.
Yeah. Authorized Board Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for contract service, services for repair work, water sewer lines twenty twenty-five on a per call or resonated basis for Chum County Sanitary Engineers Department is accordance with the bid specs as prepared by Chum County Sanitary Engineer.
Hey, Gary Newbrough Sanitary Engineer, uh, Commissioner, this is every year we go out and, um, get our list of emergency contractors for our day-to-day work. And they basically submit what their unit prices are going to be here. And we pull into that for their bills throughout the.
To remove from table, item twenty-five, Commissioner's Meeting Agenda, under the date of October second, twenty twenty-four, which read more of the best proposals submitted by inmate calling solutions LLC for inmate telephoning kiosks. That was eighty percent commission, October, just removing the telephone calls. Um. So we're removing from being table. And then number fifteen, modify and award that company with the changes, uh, the corrections that were made. So sixty-seven phones instead of fifty-six. Um, twelve visitation phones instead of twenty-four. And the rest is the same. Um, two-year period and then the eighty percent is in there. So it's, it looks like the big thing is the number of phones. It's what we're adjusting. I want to hear from the sheriff's. Anyone from the sheriff's department on the line with this? Mason, everyone away, but.
All.
Star six, if you are. Okay, that's the only changes I want to probably learn. Sixteen, adopt the resolution authorized expenditure on water sewer infrastructure, Kinsman Township Colbert Repair, twenty thousand nine seventy-four twenty-five, to replace or repair the Colbert, which runs below Morphery East Road. I think that was the last of the Kinsman, correct? You're gonna take care of pretty good. Number eighteen, begin the disciplinary process for Commissioner Office Staff for obvious offenses. Uh, there's not an obvious offense that I see. Requesting outside investigation to term appropriate discipline for balance of offenses, both commissioners' offices and our staff. Her request, Frenchgo. She asked if that was put on there? No. I don't agree with it.
And you skip seventeen, I think that's why she was, she was talking how it.
No, seventeen goes sixteen, yeah.
And just since we're waiting, smart here, Chum County, since we're waiting, I had this as part of my report, um, the reason I went ahead and put this resolution on, usually I do ask before I do it, because I asked you, should I ask her? Uh, Attorney Rogers included that with the approval for some reason, and she usually doesn't, but I think she included it, I was going to ask you last week at the regular meeting, but the meeting got cut short, so I just wanted to add it on since I.
That's fine, that works good. All right, number eighteen, um, oh, she have anything on this?
Um, I do, uh, Alex Stephen Johnson Bush, Human Resources Director. Uh, I want to make it very clear, I can only advocate myself in this, um, there was a memo April sixth, twenty twenty-one, signed by the board at that time, including Commissioner Nikki Frenchgo, that acknowledges that Human Resources Department, just so we're very clear, commissioners, has no role in disciplining other people's staff. It's right here, I will bring it tomorrow, I will read it to her, she also signed off on this. The clerk is responsible for the commissioner's staff, I'm responsible for my staff, I would discipline my staff if need be. I have no right to step in and demand discipline of anybody. That would be up to the department head, that is their job, that is their role, I and my department assisting that. We will do the investigations, if there's no conflict, we will either ex, you know, externally ask that a Clemens Nelson helps us if there's a conflict of interest, but I want to make something very clear. It is not human resources role to discipline everybody in this county, and what's hilarious is that she was like, oh. Thank you, commissioners.
With this, I see no grounds to this southern and sour grapes. I, I'd like this removed from the agenda, if she wants to introduce her from the floor.
I would as well.
See if she gets a second, that's on her, fails to get a second, there's no discussion, I think.
I agree.
This is, to me, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna slander or attack anybody, um, to do anyone's bidding for revenge or, uh, it's inappropriate.
Something that's politically motivated.
Totally correct, and I, and I saw it.
So I'm.
Nothing to it.
I don't need to.
I, I'm after that, and I, I think two commissioners can do that, one can put it on, two can remove it in a public meeting. They said if she wants to make a motion, make a motion to the floor, and see if she gets a second, that's up to her.
I just feel that.
I, I don't think this should be addressed at all in any way she ever performed, especially in the public, if she wants to do a press conference, do whatever, do that, this isn't, we're not gonna waste taxpayers' time trying to, to give her revenge for her last seventy-two days.
And then just to end out, Stephen Johnson Bush, I just feel it's high time that somebody actually puts the best out there and is very clear on what roles and responsibilities are of the Human Resources Department. So I felt like this was a good time to just level set and make sure everybody's very clear on what my roles and responsibilities are and what is included in my job description, which I do it here too. Thank you.
Like you said, but if it's brought up, and there's not a second, there's no discussion.
Right.
And I, I understand during the public comment section, if you wanted to bring that up, but I don't wanna entertain for discussion and open up into a big, uh, look at me, give me my five minutes of fame thing, type of thing, we're not doing that, that's done. Um, she has free speech to do whenever she wants, within the guidelines of what we do. Okay, number nineteen, group change order number one, deduct with DeSavo Construction Company for the Chum County Engineers Office Upgrade Project located six fifty North River Road. The upgrade includes new windows, new mechanical systems, new electric panel, in an amount of one million eleven thousand dollars. And it, change order one is a credit of sixteen thousand one fifty. It's provided by Warren Glass for Services Tools Equipment Labor Materials for Curtain Walls. New contract total include change order will be nine hundred ninety-four thousand eight fifty, so.
Saving money.
What was the policy?
Saving money, there's no hard term with any maintenance, it's just a redesign of the window that, where Glass said that we could get it cheaper, the same type of insulating. Instead of that window, you're looking at double hung with a mallet in the middle, just the one solid window.
A lot of this started a long time ago, a couple of years in the making.
Yes.
So what exactly are they doing for a million bucks to, to upgrade a building?
They're running new, uh, P-TAC units, they're like HVACs for all the offices. You get in there, you've seen them on the walls, we're upgrading them to all electric instead of water-based. The boilers are getting removed, you don't need a boiler, they're getting new, uh, air handler outside to ventilate air, move fresh air, the new windows and all the federal specific main breakers and all the breakers are all specific, so they are afraid all of them. That's the cost of all.
A million bucks. Just sounds, uh, just like with the two million on, I mean, putting a million dollars in the upgrading facility just blows me away, maybe that's the way government works, but I'm appalled, just like the seven hundred thousand dollar steps, I still can't get over that one. I understand that, we can potentially bid, but they think the government has this massive piggy bank, and this is my house. But you put a million dollars in upgrades to the windows, that was your house?
I think this is a massive facility too.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking.
Windows surround, you know.
They're all along east, so.
I just want the public to think we're just throwing money out like we don't care, this is, this is a big deal.
Do you go look.
Million dollars is a lot of money in it.
Go back to Chum County, you go look at the windows now, it's three eighths plywood wrapped in aluminum core. And those are at the base of the window, then you have the window themselves that are are just not fixable anymore, and it goes from the bottom to the second floor and it's all one run of keys. So they have to make that, when you do a window upstairs, it's one long run down to the first floor. So it's all one continuous type of window system that we have banned. That's just the windows, but we're saving the money, like I said, instead of a mallet down the center, it's one large picture. And the electric is outdated and old, and it's from the main breaker coming in off the street to every panel that's in there.
I understand that, I understand there is a cost to doing business.
Yeah.
I just want to know that wasn't just windows changed.
Oh, no.
Yeah, that explains.
Nope.
A whole heart of a lot more, but.
Yeah, just thinking of it as windows.
Well, it's a sticker jar. We need that grid electric, it's all old and outdated, and it's an hazard of course, but.
Yeah, and it's not like where you can do it at your house, where you can just call somebody, you have to get a professional sign, an architect, after you buy it, write it by its code.
And instruct them.
You know, all this stuff goes into it.
Right, it's everything.
Yep, all of it.
Although I could just be calling Joe Blow to help you.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not the handiest guy in the world, but finally, there's someone, somebody like, yeah, I can fix it for you, a million bucks, I would, that just.
I don't know.
Well, I think commissioners, you need to take into account the size of the building, it's a huge building, uh, very large building. And then it does specifically say in here, new mechanical systems and new electrical as well. So I think you just really need to make sure we're not just saying new windows, this is a, a lot of work.
Oh, windows, as we went through this whole process last two years, that's what we mentioned, is windows, Dan's here's office, windows at the end here's office. It wasn't windows, mechanical, electrical, it, it was always just the window project there, so that's what.
Yeah.
I understand it better now, hearing that, for Bill, that's why I want to make sure the public understands that too.
Yes.
Because we're writing a check of the public's money to, I'm in for a million dollars. And it, I don't want anyone to think, well, just so, you know, a secretary doesn't catch a draft and get a cold or put a million dollars in the window, it's not that. Yeah. Twenty, the man commissioners' regular meeting agenda, today dated July third, item numbers twenty-one to twenty-two, JV one fifty-eight, two six five nine nine two six six zero zero, to Ward Sage Integration Holdings. Proposal submitted for the new security access control, Chum County Family Court, Chum County Admin Building. None of necessarily change the fund number for both proposals. So these are the key fog things, I would imagine. Martha.
Yes.
Tim?
Yes, but it was for Sage, it's for Sage.
Oh, it is, yes, yes.
Um, and that's, it's, it's not, this, this is something that was already done, it's to get the fund numbers correct, it's all.
Okay, while we're on that, um, we'll go to the next one. To Ward Sage, proposal submitted for additional doors and security that were not included in the new security access control completed in August in Chum County Family Court Building. Proposal the amount of ten thousand three thirty-seven, is below the state purchasing threshold, but to be funded through fund number oh oh one oh eight oh ninety-nine hundred ninety-nine twenty-one, five oh five two one four, appropriate accordingly. I wrote recommended by Tim Hanford, this is additional things that they added along to the first.
Yes, yes. This says yes, and Tim, Tim Hanford, uh, I should direct Chum County. Yes, it is, this, this is in addition to, um, what they had already requested. Right, they gave, they had more doors that they wanted to add, so.
Yeah, I get a question for you, Tim.
Yes.
We've been talking a lot about security, a lot about security of the building, a lot about access with that, with Sage.
Yes.
What are we doing with the maintenance door? To prevent, like, we had an employee we fired last week. He knows the code to, but getting a bunch of the code and code hasn't changed for the employees, so he can still get in at any time if he wanted to.
Right.
Punch the code, go through the basement, come up the elevator and be anywhere in this building after hours, middle of the night, not saying that he would. But that to me seems like a big security leak, that any maintenance person could give someone else the code, tell somebody the code. What are we gonna do to have key fob for those guys, or to make sure that all of the doors are secure, that if somebody wants to come in the back way, come in through the basement, how do we prevent that from happening?
We're gonna get fob, but, but.
On the, on the, the door that has the key code.
Eliminate that, that key code.
And then that way to, uh, Commissioners Alex Stephen Johnson Bush, this is very typical throughout the county, uh, JFS operates on this. What we can then do is, we can deactivate that fob, that is the key.
Correct.
So when we know, so what HR will do is when we know that there's, I don't mean to step in, but there's a process that we need to work together to create, we'll be working on that. But when there is a termination, especially, even just a resignation, work with whatever the fact may be. What we then need to do is HR needs to be the one to kick that over to IT to say this needs to be deactivated. And we will help create that process and procedures once we get everything fixed, but yes, we absolutely need to do that because all of the keys are housed within this apartment. So if they enter through that door, or in any way, shape or form, they then have carte blanche to our entire, um, you know, county. So we are taking steps to move, move that forward strategically. But everybody is gonna need to work together.
With that, we'll be able to tell who fobbed in and when, so everyone know like who was in this room tonight, when you've been, you'll be able to see. Maintenance person, so-and-so employee, so-and-so deputy, so-and-so made their way into this room and left, you know. We can track all that.
And, and, and also too, one, one of the big things is, is that departments are telling us to deactivate fobs, but they're not turning their fobs in.
Right.
Guess what, they're still trying to use them, we can track them, we can say that, hey, wait, wait a minute, you told us to deactivate that, who, who's trying to use it?
Right.
And then, so, and then also too, somebody says, hey, I'm missing, I lost my fob, I need another one. We deactivate the old one, they try and use that old one, guess what, we're gonna be able to track it.
And we've had that happen.
Yes, we actually have that happen.
So, so there is something, yeah, I'm just worried about the concern thing if, when all this money, seventy grand, whatever into it. If someone comes right through maintenance, cause they used to work here a year ago and the code's still the same.
Yeah.
You know, and they clean us out, or they get, they, they let a buddy know, got a drug problem or something, we come in and Bill comes in and this laptop's messed off, is that, you know, we need to know, you know, that's security risk.
May I ask a question? Is this, uh, the function, Julie Green, Chum County? Is this a function of the maintenance or IT, or is this something that I should be pursuing for our building?
I think we should do this personally as commissioner, I think we should have this at all county buildings, and even with the maintenance people. You know, to get in the front door at night, they gotta use the key and the fob.
Yeah.
But our maintenance people don't even have fobs yet, so.
If our maintenance people need fobs, we.
I know what I'm saying now, is if your, Bill's, Bill's guy goes out the front door to throw the trash out to the curb.
He has to have a fob with him.
He, he, he can't get back to the building now, he's gotta walk all the way around to go to maintenance, come through the basement all the way up again, he can't just go back up and unlock the door and let himself in. And we need to, we need to do that, I mean, even now, you, we need to be thinking about that, so our maintenance, our, our janitors, our custodians. They, we need to get them on the fob system, even though they don't have a fob with that door yet. They still need to get in the front door and then eventually to get into courthouses, and that's something too, I had a meeting with um, Judge Lucci and Judge Patton the other night, and I want to know what's up with the security, so what's going on, with what they got, they, they think we're going slow, or the process is slow, and they just asked if everybody could pick the process up a little bit with the the courthouse security of the appeals court. So I mean, that, that just ties in all of the security.
Yeah, so commissioners, I mean, Julie Green brings up a good point, Alex Stephen Johnson Bush, I think right now, to answer her question, and I don't know, I'm looking for direction of the board, right now, I think we're starting here, right, with, with, right here, and then we will look at what commissioners want to do with other buildings, but you also have your own board. You may be under your own lock and key system, and that may be something, I'm not sure, but I think that's something that we need to, again, this is one of those times where everybody needs to, we need to sit down and we need to talk through these things because what we, we're just kind of throwing it out there, but we need, there are so many things that have to line up properly. People have to have the right access, people have to be denied access, also, who's the person who's allowed to request that access, we need a process in place, Tim, so I think we need to sit down and really take this, um, step further.
Part of.
We need written policies of how this is going to be.
There, there, there are no real concrete security policies, everybody's basically shotguns, they're, they're, they're ideas.
Yeah, I would agree.
And hopefully it sticks. So, we need some type of security review, we need at, at least some focal point in place, where we can go, and we say, hey, we, we have a security issue, we need door locks, we need whatever. We go to that person, we say, let's, let's do it, let's, let's start working, working numbers up, and let's, let's put a plan.
And I think we should, I like Bill just stood right there, hold that up, Bill. Bill goes MIA tomorrow and quits, retires and runs off in the sunset. We have no idea how to get in to have these buildings, who's got the key, where to be, that type of stuff.
Well, I can.
Once we go to a fob system, it should be able to be, we should get access all the way through and standardize it somewhat. Employees to get in areas where they have access to.
So I think that we really need to take it offline, but just hear me out when I say, even as simple as, I had an emergency potentially in a department, this is a true story. I had to get access into that department and they had an alarm, which how would we, how are we supposed to know, HR should have, we have to get better, so and when we have single offices is what I'm saying, if there is an emergency and I need to get access to that building, yes, I have a key.
No.
But when they have an alarm set and I don't have that code, those are all things that we really need to be really thinking through. So, again, I think that we, I, I hate to find myself up for more and more work, which is all we've ever seen to do, but that's life, right? So we need to really sit down and we really need to have some standardization, some policies and procedures written. Who can request fobs, who can deny fobs, who can shut off fobs. We really need to work hand in hand on this, and I will say, it's very clear that it is an IT and a safety and who's resources ask that, that can be written to them.
What happens where the fog of electricity goes out?
Then that, that was one of the issues, that, that door will, will release out. So, yeah, that's, that's why we left that key, the, the R key and, and on that front, in case of the. It is, it is tied into the emergency generator.
Right.
So we did tie it in, so if there is a power, you have a two-second delay, it will just energize it back, so it's always locked.
Mm-hmm.
Unless there's a complete.
Place I'm talking about.
Transfer, generating failure, lost electric, you know, very seldom that ever happens.
Transfer, generating failure, electric, you know, very seldom that ever happens.
I just went on, it's always locked in a room, locked in a building, locked somewhere.
Anything, anything mag black line, always release, always release the door, it's always open. Always, it's energized to keep tight.
Anyway, I guess my two cents with this is let's secure this building first and we're gonna secure and secure it because there's no use us putting seventy grand in the front door. And the bum wide corners in off the street to the garage door out back and goes in the basement. Next thing you know, he's there. So not only should we have one at the. Maintenance entrance, but where the last point of entry is for them to get into the basement, we should have a fob there too. In case someone does come in the back door, coming in their sliding door, the garage door or whatever. Then we have that security to keep the core part of this building secure. You know, because that's what we need to worry about, especially if people are here at night, Martha's working late, whatever it is, we don't want. Um, you know, we gotta plug every hole. We can't leave a hole because they'd figure a way around it. Okay. So we're on track for that. That's already done, yes.
We're on track for what you call it phase one, but I think what I'm hearing is others are concerned and I get it about, you know, when us or when is it our? We we really need to, yeah, work through what we got going on right now. It's just, it also costs money, commissioners. I mean, there's that too. This stuff is not cheap. I I mean, I do, we recognize that.
Security, we gotta go all in. So you're still an athlete, we're just wasting money.
Yeah, but you also have to go in with policies and procedures, not just willy nilly and, you know, yeah, so.
Okay. Number twenty two. Point Sheriff Paul Monroe served on the one program review board for ORC one two eight dash oh six six. Elected official from within the county, appointed by the Board of Tormal County Commissioners. Uh, recommendation of Tacey McDugan, Director nine one one. And that is that will be the last piece we need for the review board and then we can have our first meeting next week. Um, the twenty three, enter executive session, consider discipline of one employee. Leave it and then make a decision on it. That wraps up the agenda. Items for this week. Julie, everything for us?
I don't think I have any updates this week. Uh, Commissioner, um, the um Community Family Outreach Complex with Bishop Perrin. Uh, has asked for another forty one thousand. Um, with the new kitchen hood and the insulation system, with their stove and kitchen. Um, I know that we said we were gonna hold off, but I think that um. I'd like to have Julie pursue that with them if possible. It's another forty one thousand.
That's in lieu of the parking lot rose tonight.
So the actual hood was was denied. There was a, sorry, Mark the other Trump. Um, the actual, the denial was the hood that I guess Julie has worked with and reworked it. The the request that's actually one of making this on my list today to ask you about. Um, and so and you brought the prices down, is that correct? Cause I had forty nine, forty one.
So the the attachment included um architectural. Uh, costs for another project. So the only cost I put in there was the cost for Thompson Mechanical for the hood. Replacement and the HVAC system renovations. That's my understanding based on my conversations.
Forty nine. So what, just to review a little bit, we had um. A few, we had that denied request, which was all of that. And um we kind of left it frozen. You guys had indicated you were reconsidering that, that you didn't want to freeze it, but maybe put it on the maybe events list. Um, and then you asked for Julie to work on it. We weren't sure if Julie wanted to tie in on it. And I had that question sitting for a couple of weeks, but wasn't able to address it to the commissioner. Um, meetings being. Shut down a little bit. Um, so I I my question on my ARPA for you guys was, can you clarify exactly what you've done? Julie's gone ahead and dealt with um Bishop Perrin. And so I guess the question now is, do you want? That request as Julie has prepared it uh with the amount forwarded onto timing.
I do. I I would like that. And I think that.
Only question I have is. We approved that facility because it was a joint thing with the health department for the health and safety of the people in that community. How does a stove and a hood have anything to do with inoculations and?
Sure. I could speak to that. I spoke with Reverend Herron and I explained that that would be a question. He stated that's a health hub and one of the. Classes they're offering there are nutrition and cooking classes for at-risk youth. For young mothers with newborns, for the elderly, and as a. Nonprofit and a commercial facility, they're required by law to have this system in their kitchen in order to be able to carry out those classes. And nutrition is paramount to healthy outcomes, uh especially in this. Disproportionally impacted communities. It's located in a qualified census tract, ninety three forty, right outside the city limits. I mean, there's all kinds of information in the document I prepared, which I can share with you. Um, to pass along to Tanya to see if what I wrote up for them would satisfy the requirements for ARP funding, but. Um, you know, first I wanted, obviously you have to get your approval to pass it.
I want to see if they get already, it was the first.
Um, one seventy, okay, hold on. Back to it. One seventy eight oh thirty one, I'm sorry, Mark Leo, Tormal County Auditor, hundred seventy eight thousand, thirty dollars and seventy cents with a reason.
This is another forty one thousand on top of that. Right now, over two hundred pushing to ten.
But this is something that our health commissioner has stated publicly and in a letter. But obviously there was health discrepancies in that area and this would. Be a conduit to sort of bridge that gap in an area that's definitely needed.
I I guess my only concern with this, and I agree with that, is we gave one hundred seventy eight, now we're giving them another forty one. And we had more family mission in here, we haven't given them a penny. And which helps people every day that are at need immediately, right now, right at the second. And we're gonna put another forty one into a hood of a stove before we do anything for the more family mission. And that, I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
We need to do some more family. If this is the direction we're going with that, I think we need to not be hypocritical and we need to address concerns that are. Open wounds right now and not. Our nutrition program down the road, we've got a gaping open wound right now where they have no heat. Uh, and no air conditioning for this winter.
So Bill, on that, uh, remember you were looking into something with the HVAC?
Yes.
And what what's the status of any of that?
Uh, Bill, Tormal County Maintenance, um, that's on hold since we're doing nothing with the health department now, so. Um, at least HVAC ends are like out of the picture now, so.
No, I agree with assisting both. I think we can do both. And this the responsible thing to do, so um. But I mean, first thing first.
Have they submitted anything to us, Martha?
Yeah, I believe that I did receive that in some of the new ones, but I have to check my, whatever checking out. He, I believe shortly after that, it's a request, but I'm not sure.
And I will, if we're talking about, yes, well, if we can finish up this discussion and maybe go on to. I was contacted by Lordstown too, Village of Lordstown, about their ask. I know it's very substantial. They're willing to to, you know, work with us and take whatever we can give them, so to speak. It's a, it's a important project uh because of the industry that's out there. Um, and something that we need to take a deep dive in to see exactly what we can afford. I mean, we're not gonna be able to afford the whole thing. But um. Like to be able to assist Lordstown, especially with the developments happening, so.
Well, I guess that brings, that brings up the address the elephant in the room there. Um, yesterday at the. Oh, it'll be WC thing, we were told we're. Not gonna be rated the same as we were on Crane.
Crane Drive.
Crane Drive and how much of our money do we commit to that?
Uh, we did a design engineering, it was three hundred fifty thousand. That that that's been.
Okay, is there any more arbor that's that's committed out of that? So there's no arbor money coming back from that with it being?
Did we already pass the MOU?
Yeah, they're already under contract.
What I'm asking is, you know how we did the nine MOUs for the ten, nine out of ten projects? Was that one of the MOUs that was already passed?
Crane is.
McKinley Heights Phase Three, it'll also be called.
Yeah, it's, I hate when I have all these.
I know.
Yeah, we we did, we passed the MOU on that because he had um. Spent and um encumbered was slightly less than three fifty. And so I guess he was doing that just to cover himself.
What what was?
Right, but then what we had encumbered plus what we had spent, just if you add that, it kind of slightly under three fifty, so I believe that's why we did the. Just to cover that we would have that.
Yeah.
Encumbered obligated.
Right.
Right, a full three fifty, right?
Well, their contracts have made it seem slightly.
Right, and that's, and that's exact, that's that's what I'm saying. This is, this is like, this is like three, three forty eight, um, six something is where we're at. I'm sorry, two, yeah, three forty eight, six, um.
Okay, the total amount covered is three forty eight, six thirty seven. There's thirteen hundred sixty three dollars of residual.
And the residual is you you covered that, you obligated that with the MOU.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
You can move that once it's up into another project.
Right, absolutely. Which is what the resolution, yeah, that, but we've got that when we obligated them.
Okay.
So that was A plus planning on everyone's behalf. Great job, guys.
I just, I just shuffle the papers. I just keep records.
But that's not. It's a lot more to. And Zach. We have more to go. We gotta get it all under so we don't spend any time.
Right, and that's part of what I would cover. You want me to start?
I guess, yeah, we can start into this now.
Okay, I'm gonna start on the follow.
So use the names a little more if we can, who's talking, because it's very clear on this thing, the video is very clear on it, but if we were talking together. We don't want any mistakes of.
We just weren't in touch. Wouldn't that make life so much easier? Like a, yeah, like a, you know, like a.
Put it up, butt, send out a little thing that pops up over our head.
We could have T-shirts made with our names on them for everything, you know?
I mean, Julie Green. That is a good idea.
Mark the Yoda Tormal County Auditor, um, just to go through my update as it stands and then I'm gonna cover a couple of other things that aren't on here that. Uh, Julie and I have been working with well. Um, eligible, ineligible and updates. Um, still pending with Attorney Rogers, family and community services scope, which is just the um. It's her later. Uh, we're still in ambulance and you had requested or wanted to know when that would send, that is an update when it was sent nine ten. Dig through my, it's harder to dig through your emails on your phone. But it was sent nine ten. What I will go ahead and do is it's a, every single thing on that. And um also CC Attorney Rogers. Right, I'll do that today. Um. And then you're going to go ahead, or I'm sorry, Julie is going to go ahead and send a macro request as soon as she has it ready. Um, you've been working with.
Julie Green, I have a, I have a meeting scheduled this afternoon with Trustee Clemson, so whatever. We arrive at in terms of different information today, I have a couple of questions for her. I'll work on it when I return. We still have time to allocate it. I I'm not really concerned about that. Um, my only question regarding that request is I know that they wanted to sort of combine their township hall with. The childcare center. I'm not sure that that is going to be eligible. So I'll I'll discuss it with her and state that if you just wanna go just the childcare center route, I think that that would be a better. Uh, way towards eligibility, but that's ultimately up to the township to decide.
Um, and then as soon as you do that, just go ahead and forward it to Attorney Rogers.
Okay.
And we, they've already uh said that that could be forwarded past.
Okay.
Here in this meeting. Um, and so I don't have it as orange just be on our goal on our thing just because it's not on. Her ass, right? Um, so.
I'm sorry, what about CFOC? We already discussed that. Are we going to forward that one too?
I I.
Is that right? We kind of got sidetracked.
Commissioner.
Commissioner.
Yes, CFOC, the Unity Foundation Outreach.
Do you wanna go ahead and have uh uh Julie forward that to Attorney Rogers? Right, so I'm going to, I'll make the adjustment on the gap sheet, put it back where it was, unfreeze it, give the amount. If you could CC me what you sent to Attorney Rogers, then I can adjust the amount. Um, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, so eligible requests, Kinsman Township Culver, I've already addressed that, it's on the agenda. I put that on the agenda just because she had already sent the resolution and agreement and I was unable to ask. Um, the majority of the board last week. Um, Howland Township Food Pantry Request is eligible. Do you want me to have Attorney Rogers prepare that resolution and agreement for next week?
Yes, sure.
If that's possible. And do you want me to let um Howland Township know?
Yeah.
Uh, the Cunning Engineers Office is working with those three townships. With that crow's money that puts in blue other than the Community Family Outreach, um, those three, the Farrington, Metso, Vizzetta. Uh, we are closest at the Vizzetta and to to an agreement. Uh, Farrington's a little bit behind that and Metso is behind. So I'm I'm working uh with Gary Schaefer and keeping in touch with him. Uh, these agreements, because they're a little bit complicated, have to go back and forth between Attorney Toth and Attorney Rogers. So I've seen a little email traffic on that the last couple of days for Vizzetta, so we may even have Vizzetta for next week, but won't know. Um, the Snowwagon Project for Sanitaria, at the October second workshop. Um, we talked about the original scope going forward, utilizing both residual funds from some of these other projects. And also adding eighty five thousand to the amount set aside. I need clarity on that to make sure that you guys are okay with. Pulling eighty five thousand for what we have left of the ARPA funds and adding it to Snowwagon. In order to be able to complete and make it, make it the entire scope. I'll let Gary copy it.
Yeah, Gary Newbrock, Senator, uh, commissioners, we did discuss doing that extra extension down the Anderson Morris Road. I would need an additional eighty five thousand dollars.
Even like the residual, using residual funds or something.
Right, right.
Well, in light of Crane Drive, especially in. I I think it's, um, we need to do that to supply water to, that's a potential. It's gonna be a very large development out there. That's what we should be looking at. Talked about it before, affordable housing, we need it in Tormal County. This is a way that we can assist them, so.
I think we have to, especially in light of yesterday's meeting where there was a lot of. Wrong statements regarding housing and regarding the importance of the. What was the category, what do they call that? The the category?
Regional, regional significance.
Regional significance. Um, regional significance of housing is top priority, at least for our Board of Commissioners, although. Some of the people at the table yesterday didn't feel that way. Um, and I think we were discriminated against in that sense with the with the score we got.
We got a twenty last year, this year we got a fourteen somehow.
So, uh, of course, that's a whole nother story and like the way it went down, I I I'm upset with some of the people who are there that I think had. Their own agendas around the table to get money for their own projects. Um, but with that said, Mr. Altabelli was there and talked about the housing and he was told there is no housing problem. This doesn't affect the regional significance, which I disagree. And I think with this here, there is a regional significance with this. And if there, it's gonna, it's gonna cause development with new housing in an area. that is built for that. It's not like we're going up to destroy farmland in the middle of nowhere. This is something that's occurring, uh, in a suburban area where houses are supposed to be anyway, and we're rebuilding and, and growing within the city limits and within suburbia rather than growing in the farmland, which I don't wanna resist as much as possible. This is an opportunity that fits that, and we made the commitment too with the votes. Not that that had anything to do with it, but they made a commitment to extend the, or, or to, to support, um, the enhancement of that area, and we need to, we need to look at the significance also of that region there for growth. And this is one way that we can put our money where our mouth is as Commissioners and encourage development and growth.
I, I don't know how the committee could be that shortsighted, especially once the, um, Commissioners have allocated a million dollars. Part of that, of what we did with Valley Vision twenty fifty was to look at housing strategy, and that's what East Gate is putting together as we speak right now. Is a, is a comprehensive housing strategy. And for them to say that affordable housing doesn't fit into the regionalization category or shouldn't be scored a certain way, it should be scored the most important way. Um, and, uh, just asking East Gate themselves, they're sharing the, 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 the strategy as it's being put together now, so. I, I didn't understand it one bit, um, but we got a little bit.
We live with it, we don't have to be happy with it though. And there, there are some people on that committee, I think, that were, including the city born. Um, their representative there made some statements that were false and, and started out the whole meeting by basically like making, like Gary was bad because he had two Commissioners and a lawyer there to fight for the rights of the citizens of Trumbull County and our taxpayers. And, and what they failed to recognize is although he blamed Gary, like Gary was bringing in Big Brother to watch over him, I was invited there by Engineer Randy Smith, not by Gary initially. So, so he was basically throwing a dagger at Engineer Smith, thinking he was throwing it at Gary and caught the engineer in a crossfire with that, and the engineer, um, and I had a discussion afterward that he understood that, that no, Mr. Makowski was wrong on that, his accusations of that, and, and I don't, I don't like the way we were treated, the disrespect that our citizens got, our sanitary engineers department got, or our people got, and through that meeting yesterday, but, uh, Mr. Genetti and Mr. Makowski felt for whatever reason, they needed to retaliate in some way, shape, or form. But it was ironic that they all got their projects, every one of them that they wanted. And were passed and went through. And the project for the people and Crane and the sanitary engineers and our taxpayers got the short end of the stick, um, as like a punishment, which it shouldn't be that way.
And by the way, the OPWC has granted every extension to Gary. Gary deals with multiple funding sources, unlike a lot of these other projects. He's juggling six, seven funding sources with different timelines. Of course, there's gonna be extension.
That's, that's. I don't, I don't know the whole history of this whole thing or whatever, but that was the worst in government that I've seen since I've been elected in two years. You know, they say there's government, I don't wanna say corruption, but there's government quid pro quos and scratch my back off scratchers. I saw it yesterday for the first time, and if, if that happens a lot, I could see what government gets a bad name and people don't wanna serve and don't wanna do things, cuz I, to go backwards the way it was, that clearly in itself was, to me, an indictment of, um, we can do it, or we won't do it, and we don't care if you don't like it. Uh, Gary Newbrow, Sanitary Engineers, Commissioners, after those scores, and working, uh, and spreadsheet came out yesterday afternoon. Last year's round, I scored an eighty-three. Way up in the funded category list. Results of this round. Now a sixty-nine, same exact project. Dead last in the entire district. So, there's something wrong with her.
That's amazing. It's disappointing.
So, um, Mark, the Yoder Trumbull County Auditor, I don't find one there, but I wanna focus back on this just a little bit. On for Snowwagon, in speaking with, um, Attorney Rogers and working with Julie, uh, we know that we're gonna have to do another MOU for this. Um, and we actually held off on doing, this is the one project we held off on doing the MOU for, because we wanted to kind of put everything together. So what we'll be doing then is, uh, probably Zach will be doing the MOU, and we'll have it on next week's agenda with all of these items. The residual parts from those other projects redirected and also G eighty-five thousand. And then I will change this fund, I will change the spreadsheet to reflect the amounts, um, so that you guys have an accurate spreadsheet. That.
Julie Green, I got an email from Tanya on this.
Okay.
I sent her, I, I don't check, I don't know.
I think I got CC'd on that one.
Right.
There's a lot of.
I wasn't sure if you needed to do a resolution first to change the original ones and then do the MOU. She said, no, do the MOU. She was gonna put the, no, she said to do the resolution first.
Okay.
I think.
All right, we'll go back, but we'll get it correct between the two of us.
It's complicated.
We'll get it, can we put them both on the same agenda?
I, I'm sure.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get it.
I think it's need a dollar amount.
Over the next couple of weeks, we'll get them on between the next week and the week after.
Yeah.
So that all this money is obligated appropriately. Um, the next thing on my list, um, Matt Martin called me about a asking to receive. So first of all, remember that two million dollars of the county awarded to Land Bank as a twenty-five percent match for our grant for the demolition of property. Um, he wanted to know, and that two million is already encumbered, we already have a PO for that. Um, he wanted to know if we could do half of that right now, so they would have some seed money and would be able to start working on these things. And I'm comfortable with that because when we did the Ween building, the, the documentation that I got after, you know, as of, as an invoice was really good, with Christie and I were satisfied with that. So if you guys are okay with going ahead, having him do, um, go ahead and forward a million to him out of that.
I have no doubt that the reporting will be.
Yeah, and then all of this is, all of this is already, the resolution, all of this is already been done, everything is encumbered. They just wanted to, now that they have the grant, they wanted to start moving.
Like, start moving to?
I was just, Julie Green, they just had an announcement where they got six point two million.
Good.
All right, so I will go ahead and, uh, work with Sarah, and we'll get that taken care of.
Thank you.
Um.
I guess they're gonna knock down all those houses that people, they're gonna move them to a developer and live in. That's not gonna get rid of all their old houses, right?
Well, only, only a bit of water first.
Right. So, um, the other part of this is, first of all, you do have, I wanna point out that you have the yes sheet. Um, we'll be making a little bit of changes to that based on today, but significantly, milestone, one paper, yay! I was very happy with that. Um, I did revamp and rename the allocated promise sheet, and I renamed it to spent and reserved, because I think that more appropriately describes what's on that sheet.
Color coding, which is what.
So the color coding, anything that's pink, that salmon.
Yeah.
Those are ones that Julie and her office have done MOUs for, and so that money is obligated, which is great. The green is, um, completed projects, county projects. Now, I haven't worried about any of the suburbs because we're not even there yet. A lot of those are very recent, you don't, I, but I, I concentrate on the county. Now, when I, one thing I wanna point out is I did make an error on the color coding. Elm Road is not painted on the second page. Elm Road are a project, which that would just mean getting a little too excited with my holiday, so that I might fix it, but I noted it on your sheet as well. One of the things is I began to review these, um, and am going to be working with Julie and her office on, is some of the county projects, because we're getting so close to this, we wanna do MOUs for those as well with the Commissioners' approval, just to make sure we get those funds obligated before the end of the year. Specifically, the four-H building. Maybe correct me if I have any that I missed, all right? The four-H building, um, and the planning commission roof, and possibly and hopefully rolling some, because the roof actually came in a little bit lower. But there's things that have to do with that roof that we need to take care of, ceiling and carpet. So we wanna roll those into that. I don't, I think because you probably wouldn't check with Attorney Rogers to make sure we're doing things accurate.
Right.
But I think that will be okay, just like some.
Yes, if it's okay, Julie Green, if it's okay with the Commissioners.
Right.
Uh, that's what I was coming.
Oh.
Commissioners.
I'm good with this.
And then, um, I think those are the.
Yeah, so floodplain. So Julie Green, sorry.
Yes.
We have a, um, allocation of ARPA monies for the floodplain, uh, audit, and I don't wanna share more bad news, but the initial, um, Q and A for our request for funds through East Gate's NRA in Green Committee wasn't that good. They have, they share some similar committee members. Um, so I don't know that that'll be funded this year. So I would like to obligate those funds in case we have the, uh, opportunity to reapply next year. We also will be getting mitigation plans back from FEMA very shortly on the other four properties, and I, as we discussed, this might predate Commissioner Malloy, um, using ARPA funds to assist these homeowners who, in my opinion, were targeted ridiculously by FEMA, uh, for items that were in place for the last thirty years. And I've said this to them, care if I say it in a public meeting. These houses were built in the early nineteen nineties, and FEMA is issuing violations against them in twenty twenty.
Still a lot of modern income.
Yeah, yeah.
Where people don't have the means to do anything about it.
Right.
And the sins of the, of the, of the past of the county, which none of us were a part of, we're all paying for today.
Absolutely.
Because they were permitted.
Consent decree areas is one of, one of many things that we're, we're constantly cleaning up. People's negligence, basically. And, yes, so, um, it's, and it, and it breaks my heart. I, I, we had one woman in our conference room crying. She was an elderly woman in her eighties. And, you know, the floodplain regulations are very clear. Either you address your violations, you're, we're charged with enforcing them on behalf of Trumbull County Commissioners. And so, but at the same time, how do you, how, how is that even logical? Thirty years go by, oh, now all of a sudden, we're gonna, we're gonna issue a violation, you have to fix it.
Well, maybe, maybe we need to use ARPA money.
Saporating.
But those individuals are no, of no, no fault of their own. They're, they're left with this situation. I think that the right thing to do is to use ARPA money.
I can't agree with that until we see what we have left, and we go, maybe let's make sure we take care of all the towns.
I know. The legal responsibility of the Commissioners, I just wanna add that.
Okay.
This is under your charge.
So, but you're, at this point, what we're asking for is to obligate what you are in reserve.
Yes.
Okay.
This is not extra, but she's not requesting any extra. She is requesting to obligate so that we have it obligated before the, it's already accounted for on this reserved and spent sheet. It is, if you look at it, but you understand now?
Yeah, we're page.
And there's, Julie Green, there's also a resolution that was passed that I don't know, it probably predates you, Commissioner Malloy, where the Commissioners, um, dedicated, uh, specifically in the resolution, ARP monies to address all of these issues associated with it.
It would have been, it would have been accurate, because on, on my dates, I have, um, the decision letter date for this one, or the opinion letter date, is the thirtieth of January.
Right, but the original resolution was passed in the fall, so he would not have been here.
Okay.
How many houses were affected?
Five.
And so what we have right now, um, both in encumbered and spent, is somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, a little under, a little under two hundred sixty-eight thousand of the, of the four hundred thousand. Right, that was originally, um, asked for in reserve. And I believe, I would assume the original, I haven't looked back, but I assume the original resolution was done for that. But we wanna obligate that under.
Yeah.
And I'll check into the resolution pretty soon.
I don't, yeah.
What page is that on, or is that?
The second page. That goes to the bottom above the second harvest, the Oak Hill, the floodplain issues. So this is my, you know, your, yeah, second page of the spent and reserved. Floodplain issues, four hundred thousand dollars.
Gotcha.
This is money, this is not additional money. This is money that was already set aside. So what we would like to do is, between all of this, the thing, this is, what we're talking about right now is these, what will be a total of four MOUs. The Snowwagon that we've already talked about, the planning commission that we've already talked about, four-H, again, eight, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars was already committed, and the flood um, that was already committed. So none of this is money that's not being committed, it's just, all we're trying to do is make sure that we have it obligated before the end of the year, because the money is not obligated either by encumbrance or one of these MOUs, we lose the money.
Gotcha.
Right? So, you guys all okay with those, or both okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Well, proceed, then we'll make sure.
I guess we had a discussion about this about a month and a half or two months ago, with the the seven hundred thousand dollar steps.
We're waiting for the ARP to come back for these, uh, postcards, so I'm just sending out a little bit of the collection things.
Okay. Um, but we've already approved this all the way.
Yeah.
Set aside for the steps. Correct. Is, I believe, three hundred six thousand.
Yes.
Yeah, perfect.
Right? We haven't made any changes to that at all.
Gotcha.
Um, just Mark, the Yoder Trumbull County Auditor, just, just so I can kind of finish up my stuff here. Um, with regard to doing this spreadsheet a different way, I know that when you requested that, you were thinking I would, you know, somehow find a lot of money. And that didn't really work that way, because what I have been doing all along is as things, as I know things are complete, I make those adjustments. All the adjustments that, I, I made a few adjustments on this one, but really the bulk of the adjustments have happened as we go, and I continue to do that. Um, it was a good review of that because I realized that we needed to get some MOUs for some of these things, and I was able to check in on some of these projects in the next few weeks. Some things, uh, particularly the county building type projects, we'll have some changes on. But I don't wanna make those, I can't make those changes until we fully know all the information and the, the real trigger for me to change something within, on this list, on the reserve list, is when I know that a project is complete and the purchase order has been liquidated. Cuz I have to have things balancing out. If I don't have a purchase order, if we have an outstanding purchase order that needs to be liquidated, we do it, and I'm working with Bill and Mike as well to, to make sure that we get all of those completed. So, yes, we may find some money in here, but there's also, we, uh, on things that aren't going to be completed. And another issue that I need to review and look at is the Marx Tower. We may need to do an MOU on that, but I need to sit down with some parties on that, to make sure that we have enough. And we have, we have, we know exactly what it's gonna cost at this point, or we have a great idea of it so that we can do that. But probably we have time, but we're gonna probably.
Julie Green, I mean, just my two cents with how our bids have been coming in. If, if there, if a project has not been bid yet to date, and they're expecting to bid it out and get before the end of the year, I would say just to be on the safe side of doing MOU.
Yeah, and that's like what we're doing, and I'm pretty sure came through all, I think I'm gonna do another further review.
Yeah.
But, and I'm gonna keep doing that, checking on the progress as we go. But, um, I'm pretty sure I covered everything. The only one I didn't cover was the Marx Tower, simply because there's electrical costs, and I don't even have numbers on it. Um, so the, the, the.
But those, those can be modified. The obligation amount can change.
Right.
As long as we have the entire, I, as far as.
And I wanna, I, that's, I wanna see, you know, if we're close to what we've got reserved. Obviously, I wanna obligate that, but it's like we're gonna come in really low. I only, I wanna, you know, I wanna make sure we make sure, yeah, sure, absolutely.
Do we have, are there maybes on here?
No.
Okay, what I, what I'd like to do, because we're getting towards the end of the year. I'm a Commissioner, I'd like to ask next week, um, I've got some other things I was gonna ask, we can not have a meeting next week. Cause I, I potentially would be gone on, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday. And I wanted to see if we can not have a meeting, I checked, uh, the number of dates we have, with the meetings we have, we're well over the threshold by the state. And I wanted to see if we can not have a meeting. I checked uh the number of dates we have, with the meetings we have, we're well over the threshold by the state. And if there is a pressing business, I was gonna ask if we can. Uh.
Yeah, absolutely.
Skip that next week, it'll work for, I wouldn't be here and I know you've got some.
As long as there's not the pressing on the agenda, yeah.
Um, but what I'd like to do is the following week. Um, move our. Workshop up earlier. Uh, maybe start our workshop at eight forty-five or nine o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
And not to call a special meeting for our but, but move our workshop up earlier so we can. Dedicate a good hour, hour and a half with the maybes and have that at the beginning of our workshop meeting. And then do the agenda. And if there's a way that, if that works for uh you, Martha.
That's fine by me.
About the twenty nine.
That way, we make it, it's a workshop day. If we're gonna be here all day, we'll do it all day, but let's start early. And make sure we get through all the business we have to with the agenda, with the two weeks. It'll be bigger, I'm sure, if we, if we skip a week, then. Um. And then we can really sink our teeth into this and then get this maybe list. Um, maybe if Martha could get it to us in advance, we could do some research on it before, but then roll our sleeves up that day and say, here's where we think we are. We'll leave a buffer of. Hundred or hundred fifty grand or whatever we can, but let's try to. Allocate some, get, let's sink our teeth in the maybe list before we decide what else we have for other.
It's time.
It's time, we, it is time we have to do that, so.
Um, Mark, you're.
Yes, I, for Martha and Julie Dopper. Nate, Nate.
Nate, Nate.
David, Mike, hey, good, Viana, Tomship, although Viana Fire Department, I just want to make sure the paperwork was turned in.
Right, I have that.
Yeah, okay.
That's all I want, that's all.
My question, Mark, the Trumbull County Audit, my question for the commissioners is this. Um, I can. Prepare two separate lists. If you have maybes that you looked at. Last October, that you put on the major list. You have requested to come in since then that you have had me put on the meetings. Would you like those separated into two different lists as you would, as you look at these?
Um, and it's all color coded differently. Put them on the same list, but color coded differently, ones we've seen, ones we haven't. Um, and we'll look at the ones we haven't first.
Right.
And then we'll.
Right, yeah.
But I, I think we, we need to come out of that meeting with a, a clearer picture of where's the rest of this money gonna go?
Okay. So, uh, just to finish my stuff, um, uh, I've given you uh that uh. Bottom line spreadsheet, which has changed a bit as we've talked today. Um, my, just doing quick math on these with the um. Taking of the eighty-five thousand dollars and then also the change in Bishop Heron's request where it's less than what's actually frozen. Um, my, we're right around seven hundred ninety-four.
Okay.
Right?
And that gives us a pretty good point, or if we get, like I said, give a hundred and fifty just in case. You know, then we, we should give more money back to some of these.
And we may have, because you're rating a couple of, some of these county projects when we have some winters, and we may have some. Because I know that we have some that are very close, but we haven't liquidated POs or any of that. That gives me a little time to work with both Bill and Mike to do that.
Okay. What time do we want to set that meeting for?
Eight thirty?
We said at eight thirty, is that okay? I know everyone's just getting here.
Eight forty-five?
Yeah, that would be good. Yeah, I'll, the earlier is better for me.
That way we get it all done one day. The. The workshop and that uh meeting about the maybes, what are the maybes?
Julie Green from County.
Well, it will be in the workshop. It won't be a special meeting for our but, it's just, that's workshop day and just like we're doing now, we'll go over it at the workshop, but we'll start the workshop.
Then.
No, we're just, it is the workshop. We'll start the workshop. And first thing we'll do on the workshop day is we'll, we'll do the ARPA stuff first.
Okay.
And then when we finish that up, then we'll go to our regular agenda.
That's fine.
Aiming for ten thirty when the public's usually here for that, you have people that already have their days. Set that way. If people want to come rolling and see that part of it, but the meeting will start with a regular meeting, regular workshop meeting. Um, we just will announce and notify it starting at eight forty-five AM that morning instead of ten thirty. And then I'll leave my schedule open. If you could too, Commissioner, if we gotta go into the afternoon.
Yeah.
Get through the things in the meeting. If we still have unfinished business with this, we'll work right through lunch and.
So just so, what's the date on that Tuesday? Twenty nine. Yeah.
One more question, sorry. Julie Green from County Clean. Did we make a decision yet on whether we were doing broadloom carpet or tiles from the experts here in the room? Cause I don't know anything about it. Really?
I prefer old carpet than.
Okay.
Other people want squares.
It's.
I'll go with whatever.
Is it okay to put it on the agenda for next week that way?
Two.
Okay.
Two weeks from now?
We're good with that.
And I just want to say thanks, Bill. Um, Amy's doing a great job with the ceiling replacement.
I have to go see if she's bringing the same.
It looks the same, it's just a lot lighter. It's just really nice.
You won. Thank you.
It is October twenty ninth.
Yes.
The.
Workshop.
Workshop.
Starting at eight forty-five.
With ARPA being on the agenda.
Well, then regular meeting.
Thirty. Correct.
Okay. I have nothing else.
Um. I do. Stacy. Um, I'm getting a lot of calls. What's going on with this other supervisor position? But that supervisor left us. More than a month and a half ago, two months ago, what, then we were supposed to be hiring. Two, we lost one. Do any progress on filling that supervisor slot? You're either the both of them.
Uh, Tacey McDonald, I don't want to worry, no. Um, unfortunately, um, they've relisted the ad, HR's relist the ad. Uh, we had two candidates, um, one didn't pass a background check. And the second one that we were getting ready to pull trigger on to hire, uh, was offered another job making more money, uh, with less hours, uh. Kind of a work and all type position. Um, so we've not had any other applicants for the supervisor position. Uh, we haven't even had any more lately for just um dispatch positions. Um, Patty and I are going through right now through the batch of all the applicants we've received previously and going back through like round two. And basically dropping down to layer two of people who didn't pass the critical test. And trying to start interviews next week on just additional dis- dispatcher, but we've not had any interest in supervisor.
Is there a way we can advertise it more, boost the advertising, something? Alex, Stacy?
Uh.
Well, we gotta get this position filled. I mean, they're, these employees are just sitting there waiting. But no supervisor, there's one supervisor on list and it's stagnant. We have to do something.
I, for the record, um, this has been the most important priority for HR. We have now posted a job three times, which is labor intensive on our side as well. Um, this is again, I, we, HR helped create the structure, we've put all the pop, everything in place, we just need the app. Um, however, I can never condone somebody who doesn't pass background tests. That's out of our control.
Right.
I, I'm sorry. If that's a liability you want to take on, that's on you, but it's not gonna be on my. Um, eh, there is unfortunately only so much that you can do. Again. The wages are the wages, okay? I, I.
So we got close to thirty dollar an hour job. We can't find anybody to, and we can't find anybody to apply for.
This is very important. It can be up to thirty-five. That's where.
Not to mention, you know.
Absolutely, well, it's.
I'm not so ready.
There's, yeah, so they're exempt from overtime.
With thirty to thirty-five dollar an hour job, and we can't find anybody in the whole entire world that wants to work that job. I would hope that people would look at this, right? I would hope that you would print that. We have two thirty-five dollar an hour jobs available and nobody wants.
So wait.
People got.
People, people.
I was gonna say, you could not say, it is, it would be completely unfair to say that nobody wants them. That is not true. That is not representative.
Nobody qualified wants them.
Well, it could be, either they're not qualified.
Yep.
Or. We determine them, determine them to be qualified, but for some odd reason, shape or form, whether they don't pass the background test, whether they don't want the job, whether they want paid more. They're not taking the opportunity. We've made countless offers. Stacy can attest to this. Um, unfortunately, again, it is the nature of the business. We've done JFS job fairs. Um, we have, I've reached out to TC TC, I've reached out to every single Eastern Gateway, everybody, guess what I've gotten back? Nada. I have all the proof to prove that. We are working as fast as we can. Again, on Indeed for telecommunicators, we get a ton of just click, 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 want the job? You reach out to them, they're like, I didn't even know I applied for that. Like, they're just clicking because, you know, that's what happens on Indeed, that's not acceptable. Um. Again, I don't mean to say this, we had an assistant building vehicle and department, maintenance and vehicle. Department assistant, making more than what the supervisor would make, posted. We had only six applicants. We reached out to all the trade people and said, hey, listen, I know this is a non-union job, but hey, maybe it's a step up for one of your employees. We reached out, we had six applicants. I had one gentleman show up the day of the interview. I had four interviews scheduled the day of. And I'm talking a significantly very well-paid job. So this is not something that, you know, again. You have to take into account, it's easy to just say we're not getting people. That's not the case. We are getting applicants. If they are not qualified, it is not somebody that I would ever in a million years have dispatching your nine-one-one safety enforcement call, ever. I will never stoop to that level unless you are qualified, you want the job, and you want to be here for a ten. Otherwise, it's just not worth our time. Sorry.
We just gotta, we gotta turn over more rocks. We gotta find persons. We need, we need bodies in those seats, we need dispatchers. And we need their supervisors now and, and. I mean, we're. We, we're going backwards on it. We need to go forward. We need to, we need to. Do whatever we can do as a county to step it up to find that person. I mean, we're at the point where we almost need to go headhunting and steal people from other places like they do to us.
Again, we just posted it again, I think literally what yesterday, the day before. We just posted it again for the third try. Um. We will keep posting it, we will keep advertising, we will keep, it's not a lack of advertising. I want to also make that very clear. We have applicants hitting the buttons. That's very, very apparent.
It's just, once they discover what the job entails, they don't want to do it. Like you said, headhunting, the what happens to us. The people who headhunt for us and steal our dispatch applicants are people who only dispatch for one or two agencies.
Right.
They don't deal with the workload that we have, the amount of agencies that we have, so you're not gonna entice them. I mean. Realistically, I think you could offer dispatchers thirty bucks an hour and I still don't know if we would get qualified candidates to do it. It's just, it's, it's, I hate to say it, cause it's not. People don't like to hear it, but it's generation. People don't, I, I, my own daughter doesn't want to work. I mean, so if my own kid doesn't want to work, and I was raised to work. It, it's generational. Um, they, they want to work two days a week and get paid for five. Well, so do I. I love that job like that.
Right.
Um, you know, but that's the case. I mean, i- it's very different. When I came into the business.
Hey, hey, I'll take an old person that still got gas left in the tank. Not discriminatory to adults.
That's, that's, that, I would, I would too, because they have the work ethic and they want to work. But the difference is, is they don't have the. Ability to learn the techni- technical side of the job.
Yeah.
Or the amount of volume that we handle and the type of calls we handle. I mean, I one hundred percent agree with that, um. When I started at nineteen years old, it was, you'll work the worst hours, you're gonna work, you're gonna work weekends, holidays, three sixty-five. You're not gonna see your kids, your family, everything else, and you were learned to, okay, you just s- say yes and you go to work.
Unfortunately, now they're saying yes all the time. Once they get the job, they leave.
Exactly, exactly.
That's the word.
And then, and then that's why people think about your, why your turnover is high as this, because people don't want to work. People value time more now than they do money. And that's the part where, you know, people have been in their career for twenty, thirty years. You're at that point where you, you understand that. You want your time with your family, your kids, you're, you're close to retirement and all those things. But people want that coming in the door. They don't want the money anymore. They want the, what can you offer me as far as benefits packages and time off? That's what they want. And we can't do it. This, this isn't the type of job for them.
And COVID, Alex, Steven, John, Steve, Bush, COVID exasperated out all of that, um, big time. And again, guys, I know we're, you know, sometimes we're thinking this is just Trumbull County. Nine-one-one, this is nationwide. This is not something that Trumbull County alone can fix. I hate to be so blunt. But this is bad. I keep an eye on all of the trends when it comes to nine-one-one. You don't see this in any other field except for safety forces and specific, well. Safety forces and dispatching, but.
Healthcare.
And healthcare, right. But even healthcare, this is the one caveat about healthcare. They're offering remote jobs. They're offering nursing. You can come and go as you please. You can choose your schedules, right? Those are things that we cannot and will not ever be able to offer. Cause we are a twenty-four, seven staffing.
We've had several people ask if they could do a job from home.
Yeah, it's, it's completely, during COVID, it, you guys, whenever, that was never even an option. There is no remote option for nine-one-one, period. There's just not, and then there will be, unless we go to call, I mean, one day, you know, I don't know, but that's far down the line. We don't have the equipment to take their stuff home and be able to dispatch from home.
And I understand that, and, and now it's just not to be, to be, in healthcare though. There are certain parts of what you're talking about that are true.
Yes.
But, eh, when you're talking about directly working with people.
Right.
It is twenty-four, seven. I moved in to a house for six weeks to take care of.
What I'm saying is though, Martha, is that there's options now.
Right.
Where people, nurses are leaving that in, that on-demand.
Right, absolutely.
In-person care to go to the remote nursing jobs. We are seeing a huge shift.
Right.
What I'm saying is, is there is no option for that four nine-one-one. You're either onsite, butt in the seat, head plugged in, dialing in, or you're not working. There's no other option.
And just so we're clear, so everyone knows where we're at with the touch. You've mentioned this to me before, not just Indeed, not just the Tribune. Can you run down some of the?
Yes. Uh, we advertise.
Ministerial Alliance.
Ministerial Alliance, NAACP, OCHSA, which is the Ohio, um, for Cuban, Latin America, uh Puerto Ricans. I mean, we are all over the place. Churches, all of the local churches. I mean, we are everywhere and anywhere. Indeed, I mean, indeed, alone is, is just, it hits everybody. Ohio needs jobs. We keep saying that we're not utilizing, you know, the tools that we have. We absolutely are. We advertise through Ohio needs jobs. We're on a reoccurring list that goes out in county wide. Um, when people go to JFS and, and they utilize Ohio needs job services and they're looking for in-demand jobs, nine-one-one is there and in their face at all times. They don't want it. These people don't want it. I don't know what else more I can say besides, I'm about to put a headset on and go suit up and start dispatching calls myself. I mean, what more can anybody here do? Yeah, I mean, if you want me to, I'll do it. I mean, whatever, you know, but then the union will agree that, cause I'm not union, so there's that. Um. What in my world, right?
With supervisor's job, Bill.
Hey, all right, I mean. I. Yeah, I, I will say, I think the better way to look at this, again, guys, I've done this, I've been here, believe it or not, two years in March, and I have. Very been locked step into that one. I mean, I think I'm one of the few HR directors that can actually step into any one of your departments and actually know somewhat what I'm talking about. I spend time at San Antonio. I spend time at nine-one-one. I spend time at the DOT com. I spend time in all of these departments, physically onsite, boots on the floor, learning what these people do. I can't be a good HR director unless I do that. With that being said, even auditors, I mean, everybody sitting here has seen me in your office at some point in time, yours as well. And I get to know the employees. I get to know what they're doing, so that way we can make sure we're advertising things correctly and looking, and kind of pulling the trigger on where we need to. With that being said, I think the bigger approach, and I've said this, and I, this is not to throw anybody under the bus, we need to tasty hit the nail on, you know, with a hammer. No pun intended. Um. We need to look at what we can get off their plates, okay? They're dispatching fire, she hit it. They're not just dispatching one single police entity. They're dispatching police. Fire, they're dispatching multiple boards at one time, okay? We need to look internally and keep pushing those buttons internally of what we can push back on and get off their plates to lessen that workload and make it more attractive from that angle. We have to. We need to get to the point where we have a phone call log. Is this an emergency hit one? Is this a non-emergency hit two?
Yeah.
These non-emergency lines, we need to get the heck up out of that one.
Forget it. We can't do that until we get bodies. I mean, we, we.
No, we can't do that.
We've never said as commissioners, if Stacy came in here and said, I got fourteen people and want you hired tomorrow. I, I don't think we'd say no. I mean, we need to get the bodies there so she can do with them what she needs to do.
That's.
To take the load off people.
That's not true. What I'm saying is there are things that we can do now. Now, you're not listening to what I'm saying. Phone trees, phone lines. We may have to put a little bit money in to invest into that, but if that means it's a lesser burden.
I know, but, but I don't want to just put a Band-Aid on, fix the problem.
Well, that's, that's, that's a long-term solution that needs to happen. And that's what I'm saying. We're saying the same thing, but for some reason, we're not all on the same page, but.
Bodies, bodies, we need bodies. That's what I need to stress on this, and we need bodies.
Well, and that's the guidance.
The, the people there are worked to death, or, and, and teach them another trick or another thing, or taking some of the workload. I understand what you're saying. I get that. But we need bodies. They need days off. We don't need employees working sixty-five hours a week anymore. We don't need them working fifty hours a week anymore. We need them working forty.
I don't disagree, Danny, but. We're not talking about teaching you tricks. You're missing what I'm saying. I'm saying taking work that should not be on their workload off of them. That's common decency. That's common decency.
That's management. They can handle. There's two of them there that can handle that stuff.
But it's not, that's not, it's not time.
To do the things she's talking about, we would need to go with AI, which Tim and I have talked about, phone trees. Those are things that are labor-intensive projects that are gonna cost a ton of money to do, and we can't even get money to decide if we're gonna go to a new building or what, what kind of motion we're going there. I mean, not to state the obvious, but I mean, you throw money at a department, they can make a lot of things work. I mean, money makes problems go away. Whether that's technology, whether that's people, whether that's whatever it is. The simple fact is, I've been here just over a year and people aren't coming. We've had people apply, we have people leave, they don't wanna stay, but they want paid more. The people who were there want paid more. I get it. Nobody likes to go to work. Nobody likes to go to work. Uh, the simple fact is, is yeah, we do have people, people working a ton of overtime. That's because we are short people. But the last I've heard, that's been a problem that you've had here in Trumbull County for at least ten years. That's not a tasty problem. That's not a today problem. That's a has been a problem for years. And I can't come in and just wave a magic wand and say, oh, poof, there's twenty people here who wanna work here. Cause if there were twenty people who wanted to work here, we couldn't hire twenty people. We could only hire about four, cause we only have people who can train.
Well.
So I mean, it's, it's an ongoing thing.
Element overtime here too, individuals utilize and like to utilize as well. Sick time, overtime.
Sick time, abuse of time. There is a lot of that. And, and that's because you're overworked. I get that. Everybody knows you take a mental wellness day now and then. But when you're having mental wellness days every weekend in conjunction with your days off, that screws your buddy. That screws your coworker. And then now guess what? They're there working twelve hours. And then, oh, they get eight hours off and they gotta come back for another twelve because somebody else called in sick. It's a perpetual cycle. And it's happening everywhere. It's not just Trumbull County.
Yeah. And I think to end, this is the, all I can say, we are, I mean, I will, we will continue every day, but Tacey makes a valid point in one thing and one thing only. You have this word called capacity. In our current nine-one-one center, there's only capacity for seven. Am I correct? How many guests are there?
There's ten.
Ten, okay.
But we don't have the staff for ten.
Dispatchers. We could hire twenty people tomorrow, Demi. I need you to hear me on this. I could hire twenty people for them. They may not be the best twenty, but if you want me to hire twenty bodies, I'll hire them. Okay? Where the hell are they going? Where are you putting them, Commissioner? Where?
Ask us for budget. We'll open a PSAP up somewhere and train people and take them off-site and do what we gotta do. I mean, we're in a cr- critical mode here that get us the bodies, we'll figure the funding out and what to do with them. I mean, if we gotta double people up and everyone sits with somebody to train them, we'll do that.
But they don't have.
But, but to that point, she doesn't have the bodies, and we don't have the people that are putting in these jobs that are qualified. That we can, or when we do get them, we don't retain them.
Right.
And, and this is, this is not new. This has been going on for ten years. And, and it's not new to the state of Ohio, it's not new to the country. Nine-one-one has, until they get reclassified, and I've had this conversation with their state representatives, you're not gonna be able to, and that, and what, I don't know what's coming. They said wait till the Capitol, but we, Tacey and I had a meeting with them, both of them. And, um, you know, I can't get definitive answers on it now. Until they're reclassifying their, their, um.
Properly coded job class.
Yeah, I mean, the safety forces, you're not gonna attract people for the wages that you're, that you got paid these people. It's, it's, it's very difficult to get qualified, dedicated people that wanna sacrifice, as Tacey said, their families. Work mandatory overtime. I mean, that's, gotta be a special kind of person. Not to mention the hectic nature of the job where somebody's on the lines with a gun and who knows what. I don't know what.
And, and that's the credit that you have here. We do have dedicated staff that are working and, and making it work. It's, it's not anything that, it's not, it's not anything that they aren't already used to and that they haven't been doing for years. And yet, it gets old. I, I feel for them, but we can't manufacture people who, with me, I, I wish I could.
I mean, we're trying to advertise everywhere possible. If there's more places left to do that, so.
So Nina, Apco, all those places too, they advertise the jobs for us too. I mean, I, I hope people are understanding that we're all, this is Nina and Apco post-open jobs. I mean, I, I, I really hope, I implore everybody to really understand, and I'm not saying you don't understand the facts, but really understand everything. It's not as simple as what it may seem. And until you sit your butt there with them every single day and observe and can actually attest to it, there's a lot of things that have to go into this. Now, again, Tacey, I guess, if, if what we need to do and to round this out is say, screw the critical and hire just the bodies that we need.
It's not that. I'm, we gotta find those, we gotta find the right people. I'm not saying that at all. And, but worrying about, oh, we can only handle so many at a time. We, we got a million-dollar bus where we just put another half million, three-quarters million dollars of their equipment we're putting in it. Let's use that as a training vehicle when John's not, got it on the road for, for emergency response. Let's park that at the nine-one-one center, wherever it is. And have someone out there training five, six people at a time if we got to.
I'm not saying we don't have the space, but you have to have people who are capable of training. We have. Which, but if you have four or five people that are training while they're on the job, they're also handling calls as they're being trained. It's not, it, it, like Alex said, it's, we're at capacity of, we can handle four to five new people at the same time. We have two on currently that are going through training. One's progressing rapidly through and doing great. The other one is, is moving along as needed. Um, but even if we have the command vehicle set up out there with four stations, I don't have four bodies that I can send out there to train, even if I had four applicants. I mean, it's not the question of, we're just not getting qualified applicants who can do the job, that can either deal with the stress of the job, the amount of, you know, details and departments that they deal with, uh, compartmentalize, all those things.
And, and I don't think it's a, it's a sign of the times, and, and I know maybe Tacey and I disagree. I don't, I don't think it's people don't wanna work. I think this problem's been here for a long time. It predated me. This has always been here. This, this is, this is just a difficult line of work where you gotta have a special person for it. And like I said, wants to sacrifice their family and their, and their time off and. But, but it's trending worse. You know, it was bad when I got here, and now we're twenty, they had twenty-five employees when I got here. And that was dreadful. And now it's, we're seven less than that. Been worse than that, believe it or not. Been worse than that.
Well, and what's, and what's trending worse additionally with that is the wages of every other job that are going up and dispatches. My daughter's going for an interview at Kane's making, you know, fast food, sixteen bucks an hour. Our starting dispatchers are just over, what, seven and a half. So what's that tell you? Where our priorities in the US are. And it's not, it's not, like I said, it's not just Trumbull County issue. It's, it's across nationwide.
Well, can we pay them more? We got budget areas coming up. Should we allocate? Above, we got contracts coming up with them. Should we look at that?
Two more years.
No.
Yeah, you got, you need a wage reorder and then you all.
I should be, that contract is up twelve thirty-one twenty-five. We're, again, you, you do that, that's your choice. But I'm going to give you the most.
We just said, we can't, we're not paying them enough. They don't wanna work here cause it's not, not enough. What are we gonna pay? All the bargaining units are gonna want the same thing.
It's not even, that's true. But there's another thing that you have to, I'm sorry, they, they are, you guys are saying, I'm sorry, I hate to say this. You look at the serve average of what they're paid, they're overpaid compared to other dispatchers. Okay, they are fairly paid.
Then why are we losing in other departments that say, where they say they're getting paid more to go to, to go to speed, to go to, to go to Austin town?
I know Austin town workloads less. You're, you're dispatching for one agency. You're not dealing with it.
You gotta compare apples to apples. I do agree. I'm not gonna ever sit here and say that our county employees don't deserve more money. I'm never gonna not say that. I am saying, but the right time to do it is at the bargaining table, okay? They just bargained that contract. That's on OPDA and whoever signed off on that.
And by the way, it wasn't working.
There was. There absolutely was. You're also neglecting to talk about the facts, and I'm just gonna speak in facts here very clearly. You're looking at seventeen thirty-nine. You're not talking about the hazard pay, the shift differential, the ATAC pay, the EMT pay.
Retirement, the health benefits.
When you add all of that in, plus acting supervisor pay, I hope that you do understand, you have some telecommunications making thirty dollars now. I hope you understand that. Please speak in facts.
Who, who they are. And they're acting supervisor for a dollar an hour or more. And then tomorrow, the person that they're supposed to be supervising, the supervising that system doesn't work.
And we're trying, we are, I, I, again, I implemented, I, we have the hierarchy, we have the structure there. We just gotta get the people in there.
I just brought this up because I've had, it seems, I don't know why lately, but that's what I hear when you talk to cops, when you talk to firemen. Like, what are you gonna do so about nine-one-one? What are you gonna do so about nine-one-one? I hear on the campaign trail, you know, people are attacking us. You know, saying, oh, we're gonna come in and we're gonna fix it. No, they, they're not sitting in our shoes, but we need to address it. We need to make, to let the public know. We are addressing, we're doing, we can address it. We're doing it again right now. And when we have, we're gonna hire three supervisors and we get one. She works for six months, whatever it was, three months, then she quits, and now here we are eight months later or whatever, and we haven't even filled her position yet. The other one that we already allocated to fill too.
It has not been.
We need to step it up.
That's, it's not many months.
And I'm not pointing the finger anyway. I'm not pointing the finger at you or your department. I'm pointing the finger at Tacey. I'm saying collectively, we are commissioners. We gotta allocate for more funding for advertising. If we gotta do what we gotta do. We, we can't just say, that's not working. Oh, well, well, maybe it'll change next year. Maybe someone will wake up tomorrow and decide they wanna be dispatcher. We gotta go find that person. Because bottom line is, there's people that are waiting for us to do that. There's employees that are waiting. And they're now looking at their clock saying, we're doing pretty quick, cause I'm retiring in three months. We're doing pretty quick. It's six months, three of us are going, and then you're gonna be down to fourteen dispatchers. Then we're gonna have a crisis. Then what are we gonna do?
I don't think.
We're gonna be like, wow, we should've started this a year ago.
I don't think anybody's saying that we're just waiting for, I, I don't think that's a fair statement. I, I, I'm gonna definitely say that for my department. It's, it's not, we're just waiting. We are actively recruiting, trying. I have documentation. It is what it is. Next thing I wanna make sure you understand too, one more final thought on this is, the big shift to Commissioner Keanu Mesa's point. There was one big shift in when this all started happening, before any of us. When the sheriff recused himself of having nine-one-one, that's the point that nobody continues, everybody continues to miss that and not talk about that.
Twenty-eight years ago.
And it has been, it was not, yes, but it has been a problem since then.
I, I agree. But that's twenty-eight years ago. They used to have a full staff, and they had three supervisors for ten, fifteen years after that. And they had floats, and they had fill-ins, and they had part-timers.
It was a different.
Actually, that we just.
Right. If, if you wanna solve your staffing problems right now, I would have conversations with Niles, Lordstown, Gerard, and combine into one dispatch center.
That's right.
There, you're gonna absorb all those. But they're, they're not gonna, they're not gonna.
Been twenty-eight years of this way. We went away from that way, is what I'm trying to tell you. That is the evolution. When you go away from something and you've operated this way for so long, that's now the expectation. Okay, so we just need to, just Tacey, you and I, we'll just continue to, I, I mean.
Continue to plug along like we're doing.
I mean, that's what we do.
We brought Warren in, but there's seven employees. We got one left. One employee left out of the seven. But we still have all the workload.
Right.
Even though we're getting paid for it, that doesn't mean anything. We don't have employees to pay.
What's the dollar amount for the phone tree solution, I'm saying?
It depends. Um, a couple of them, like the one we were talking about before, it doesn't work with our nine-one-one solution. So then the next thing to look for is like an AI platform, which is very expensive.
Million, one hundred thousand.
I don't know the number. I mean, it's something we've been looking into. I've got a couple of them on my desk.
You, you went to that conference a couple of weeks ago, did any word from that, any news from that, any updates?
Every single class that I was at was talking about staffing and retention. There was at least fifteen classes in a free-day seminar about that. People are dealing with the same thing. Not being able to retain employees, not being able to find employees, every single, like, there were fifteen classes on there. So it's, it's happening across the state. You're seeing lateral, you know, people offering for laterals.
Not to mention the cost of the resources that we're spending in training these individuals. They go through a training. Whether it be six months, a year, and then they up and leave. That's time and resources that we. Have we, have we ever done the county, we ever had our own county, Trumbull County Job Fair? We got like Patrick Music Hall. We put our Gary there with a booth. We put her there with a booth.
So that's, that is what they do. Again, I really.
I'm talking us, just Trumbull County, just us. We set up shop for one Saturday, and our department heads with a table. And invite the public to come and see what county jobs we have available. Publicize it and come in and job shop, just with Trumbull County job openings.
No, but I will say, I mean, they're all, again, available on my website. Nine-one-one's a current post. Every, nine-one-one never comes down on my website. J F S never comes down off my website. Their Facebook, they're also down. Another, a- again, we can sit here and, and that works, right? There's multiple places that are down right now, including not just Tacey's department, so. Uh, yeah, I mean, this is, you're, we're not talking, another thing too, and I'm sorry, but I'm gonna say it, because we continue to talk about. Culture is a real thing. I'm, I'm gonna tell you, as an HR director, culture is a real thing. And maybe it's nobody's fault at this table here. But hear me when I say that. Culture, social media, people can Google, people are not done. People see how I'm treated in my world. And do you really think that I can entice people to come work here when I'm called hefty? Do you?
Well, that, that worries me in a sense too, cause we got Kimberly Clarkson's gonna be coming here, and they're, they're gonna say, hey, we need nine hundred employees. Are they gonna suck the best of our employees out, and then we're left with nothing? We need to put up basically sh- shore up our resources here as a county, cause as we're increasing business coming to the county, with economic development, those are jobs, good-paying jobs that are coming here. Like you said, we're gonna be competing against those jobs. We as a county, I mean, everyone used to think county jobs, great, good Bennys, raise your family, retire from it. If we can't fill positions now, how are we gonna compete in the future? When Kimberly Clark comes in and says, hey, we're hiring laborers, twenty-eight dollars an hour to start. Hey, we need, we need toll-and-road operators, thirty-six dollars to start. Union job, good benefits. What do we do then? What do we do when half our nine-one-one dispatchers walk out and go dispatch for Kimberly Clark at twenty-eight dollars an hour? Just to dispatch the truck drivers moving in.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Mike, hey, goodbye, and a township. Have you ever thought about going to the high schools, the senior classes and putting on a, a program? I mean, they're getting out, you know, into the workforce and stuff and trying to recruit them, go to TCTC, you know, and put on a program. Um, a lot of them might not know what they wanna do yet. Like, if we can catch the seniors in our high schools, it might be something.
The problem that we've had, I've done that in my previous county before, the only problem that we've had with that is most people don't go to work and say, I wanna be a dispatcher. They wanna be a fireman, they wanna be a cop. Um, so a lot of times what happens is they use that as a stepping stool. They get hired until the age requirement, they hit their age requirement to go do those jobs. And, and unfortunately, because firefighters are the same way, you guys are down looking for people. Volunteer firefighters are way down. Police are way down. So what happens? They've lowered the age for that. So now you have nineteen-year-olds carrying guns around when they can't even, you know, drink yet.
It's the perfect, it's like the perfect circle of just, kinda, everybody just keeps dropping when we go to, to answer your question. I not only reached out to TCTC, but I also reached out to Eastern Gateway. Again, I have all the emails. Guess what I heard back from them? Nothing. Not even a reply back of, yes, we'd entertain it. You know, we'd like to have you come in. Absolutely nothing. I mean, and I will say, in TCTC's defense, they don't own a program like that right now. So typically, if I think I reached out and said, hey, we have welders who are interested, or we have plumbers, or we have electricians, absolutely, they'd be like, sign us up. There at TCTC, there is no nine-one-one program. So what would these people be going? That's, I guess, what I'm saying, is they're going to TCTC for a trade that they're already interested in. Welding, plumbing, electrician, HVAC, cosmetology, um, very well-versed in all of that, and I have looked into all of that. Business, I mean, you know, um, cooking, uh, yes, culinary, thank you. Uh, so they have the programs, right? It would be more so of a, than partnership, but do they, I don't even know, do they, you know, and they won't even answer my email. So I, again, uh, seems to be a hard no, but I tried. I did. I went to ETI.
It's a great idea. It's just unfortunately, usually it's, it's, and this is what I've said all along. It's, it's not like OPADA. OPADA's like for, you know, state patrol has state patrol academy. OPADA's for cops. They don't have like a dispatch academy, and nobody ever wakes up and says, oh, I wanna be a dispatcher today.
Yeah, right.
I got in it because my dad was a cop, so I grew up around it. You know, so that's what you'll find is like second-generation or, you know, people who actually, you know, know what that's like. I know what it's like to have a dad that's not home for my sporting events or Thanksgiving, or, hey, Thanksgiving's on Saturday because he works on Thanksgiving. So you're used to that. You know what it's like, and you know that life going in. And, you know, you tell people that now, and they're like, oh, my kid's gotta play, and they're like, you're gonna, sorry, you're gonna miss it. It's like, no, this job's not for me. You know, and that's, that's unfortunately the job. That's, that's the job.
Looking back in the day too, if you just look at our staff that's there, that's been there, say, twenty years and up. I think they all worked for Action Ambulances. They all worked for the ambulance companies back in the day, and that, they couldn't pay the bills. And that was like a nine-dollar-an-hour job, so they all worked nine-one-one center full-time, or the ambulance company in the side. We lost all those ambulance companies. So we lose that person that just got that, built that way, that is in the safety services and into that lifestyle. Um, we, we, we lost that element of things too. So, it is a problem. So, it is a problem, but if we don't address the problem, we'll never fix the problem, and that's what I'm just saying, once we've gone by. We need to figure out, we need to find the supervisors at least, and then keep always chipping away at trying to find the employees. But, you know, you said a thirty-five dollar an hour job, someone out there's gotta be listening that says, hey, I, I didn't know about it, I want that. That's good, damn, let me, let me apply, there, there's gotta be somebody out there.
Uh, Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning, I just have one comment to add, this is all part of the larger issue of the valley. We're experiencing the outmigration of people, we don't, we have a higher dependency ratio, meaning. We don't have as many working age population to sustain our youth and our elderly population. Hence the need for more senior levy dollars, hence the need for more housing with all the demolitions. We're now experiencing job growth and job influx, we don't have the trained personnel to fill it. And that's part of that valley vision, and I'm happy that we're supporting it, but this is a huge new experience for us. I mean, I'm older, I, I cannot believe that we cannot fill jobs, we've never had this in my lifetime. Our unemployment is half of what it was ten years ago, it's just something that we're just, I think as a valley. Mindset not used to planning for growth, even though in the newspaper, they talked about how the population is projected. To go down over the next twenty, thirty years, we just had that economic development summit on Friday. With the chamber, and I think there was a half percent increase actually in the estimates for population growth. So, and, and the plan for the housing strategy plan that Eastgate is, that we taught, discussed related to Crane Drive. Talking about having infill housing, talking about bringing people back, people who were born here. Even talking about legal migration, and then filling, bringing population up through those means. So, I mean, it's all part of a larger issue that we are working towards, but everybody has to work. You know, in, in the same direction, I think, and we have really good, great leaders with Eastgate, with the court authority. With the, um, you know, Valley Partners, all the economic development agencies working on these things that they feel are coming down the road. And some of which are here, and you're seeing it now, through the land banks. So it's, that's why it's important to support all of these entities, like the Trumbull County Land Bank, like Valley Partners, all of these. Entities have been working on these things for decades, and so it's important to not only know the history of what we've been working for. And I'll give the example of the unsorded areas of concern, for twenty-five years straight. Our office has worked with the sanitary engineers office, this dates even Gary, when he was with the, our office, with Tom Holloway. On addressing those unsorded areas of concern, for twenty-five years, we've been stacking these very difficult, very expensive projects. So of course, a couple are gonna fall off and not meet the deadline, but the, the point is, we're trying to take care of. All of these things from the past while trying to also accommodate growth. And making sure that we have infill housing, making sure that we have incentives available for our developers. If, if we can, through legal means, so it, it, everything is related, and, um. They're big, they're big problems.
And, and one of the things that gets overlooked in economic development, we talk about traction and retention, we talk about, you know, um. Abatement, whatever we need to talk about, but workforce readiness, that's one of the things that we lack here. We're losing a lot of individuals, but, um, the ones that are, the ones that are right here. Workforce readiness is something that we have to, along with those other issues of housing, and attraction and retention, but, um. You know, that goes along with this too.
It does, but it's, it's just things have changed so much, I remember being a kid, so county jobs were gold, it was like, you had to know somebody, and if there, there was nepotism. We couldn't have nepotism, we wanted it right now, it was like, she said, her daughter doesn't wanna work, I couldn't drag one of my family members in to come work for the county. And everyone at this table probably thinking the same thing, there are people knocking on my door saying, Commissioner, can you get me a job? Hasn't happened one time yet, since I've been here, so.
Goes back to culture, but I will say, I mean, I'll be fully transparent, there is a dispatcher there. That I wholeheartedly recommended for the job, and she is doing fabulous, so to sit here and say, again, that, you know. I can tell you that somebody that I personally know expressed an interest in a job, and to my knowledge, she's doing phenomenal, so. I hope she's still doing phenomenal, but either way.
I'm not sure who you're talking about.
See, you don't even know, cause I never told you, but you do know.
If it's the one that we just recently hired, well, within six months.
Either way. I know who they need, I know what we're looking for, and the person that I personally did recommend is still there in that seat, and working her butt off. As are every other dispatcher, so thank you for that, I hope you're listening, and I hope you hear that.
And we did say, that's all the employees there too, find friends, find family, find somebody that you know that's like you, people you hang out with, that have the same likes. That's the type of person we need, and we, and we need them to recruit, we need them to say, hey, I got a great job, come work with me, right now is. Hey, I can't come out and hang out with you, cause I'm working sixty hours this week. And I'm so depressed, I don't even wanna brush my teeth and look in the mirror, you know, you can't have that. Alright, well, we've addressed, we beat the horse enough, we just all know we, we.
One of our major focuses.
It, it's not forgotten, so. Some else for fair enough, like here. Don't hurt saying that, we gotta call someone about the PA system, PA system and cell tower, those are your big fair things.
Myself and Mr. Hinnerford, and met some people up there, which we haven't discussed or had discussed with Audrey Younger, about. Possible dollar amount, but we don't know for sure about the expectation on that, so. Um, until we get that, there's, it's in, it's in the water, we have to pull the water, just wanna get some attention.
Until tomorrow, I guess, then.
Like emotional, John?